Welcome. The October 16th meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board is called to order. I'm Scott Alupka, Chair of the Board. We will now start the meeting with a roll call to account for the members of the Board present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Braddy?
Aye.
Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Lilly?
Aye.
Ms. Muneses?
Aye.
Ms. Penaro is not here. Mr. Schulman?
Aye.
Mr. Tennant?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, please join me in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reminder, Board members, please remember to unmute your microphone when you are speaking and to mute it when you are finished. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agenda as published?
No changes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. In the October 9th email, you received draft minutes from the September 4th meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the draft minutes? And are there any corrections or additions to be made? Not hearing any, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated.
Motion.
All approved?
Aye.
Thank you. First on our agenda, we have a presentation by Ms. Megan Oliver regarding the Small Area Plan 11. Following Ms. Oliver's presentation, Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions, and then I will call for a motion to schedule a public hearing on the matter. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Oliver.
Okay, good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Planning Board. I am very pleased to be here presenting to you the Small Area Plan 11 report, a culmination of the last year's work from many of us in the Planning Department. My name is Megan Oliver. I am... We said that this would work, but it's not. Neither are working. Thank you for your patience. Do you want to just scroll? Okay. So my name is Megan Oliver. I am the District 6 Community Planner. I was the planning lead for this effort, but by no means was I acting alone. I had a large support team. In the Planning Department, I was supported by Deputy Director Mantey, by the Community Planning Division Chief, Ms. Jobe, and then by Ms. Rabdi and Ms. Meyer, the District 5 and District 7 Community Planners. We were also supported by a consulting team. We had Air St. Rose as the prime consultant. In addition, we had subconsultants with Strong Environmental and with CHP Planning. They offered technical assistance throughout the planning process. So, just to give you guys a little bit of a baseline, a background understanding, what is a small area plan? The small area plans are meant to take the recommendations from Master Plan 2030 and translate them to the local level through the lens of a local context. Master Plan 2030 identified the need to create these plans and identified 12 separate areas where small area plans would be created. We started with Area 11. And why was that? Why didn't we start with Area 1 or another area? Well, Master Plan 2030 recognized that Middle River area and the surrounding communities have experienced a lot of change in the last couple decades. There have been a number of partners and players who've shifted their presence in the area, a number of large development efforts that are completed or underway. And so it identified the need to really look more closely at the Middle River area and the surrounding communities. After the adoption of the Master Plan 2030, the County Council adopted this resolution, which put in place the starting of Area 11. I'll hold it farther from my face. The planning process started about a year ago, as I mentioned. So in the summer of 2024, we really began our background analysis. We began to collect data information about the area. We were mapping. We were also reaching out to the community as our first introduction to the planning process and getting their input for the very first time. We started to listen and learn about the community, and that listening continued through the remainder of the process, through the defined phase where we're really trying to confirm what we had learned in those initial months. And finally, where we are now, the delivery phase, where we packaged everything into a final report and presented it to you. So we had extensive community input throughout this process. And then in addition to the community input, we also were able to... Next slide, thank you. We were grateful to have participation from County Council members. All three council districts in the area had their representatives engaged throughout the process. In addition, we have had ongoing conversations with public agencies at both the county and the state level. And I want to take an opportunity now as well to thank all of the Planning Board members. Many of you have been involved through focus groups, public meetings, and helping to encourage people in the community to get involved. So, before I just let you guys loose with the report, I wanted to help get you familiar with what you're going to see in the document. We do at the very start have an executive summary. That's going to be that high-level takeaways summarizes the main points and the overarching recommendations and objectives. And then next, I'll go through each of the chapters themselves. So in the introduction, this is really setting the stage and providing the context. It outlines why we're creating a small area plan and how the Master Plan 2030 identified that as a need. And then it also provides an introduction to Area 11 and the process that we used through this particular planning process. In the Area Characteristics chapter, we're really trying to paint a picture of Area 11, both past and present. So it's providing a snapshot of the demographics, of the housing landscape, of development. This provides all of that background research that we collected. So, in addition, a history of the area. So it's painting that picture of the area overall in addition to summaries of each of the individual sub-areas. There are five in this area. And the individual nodes within the area. Those were place types identified in Master Plan 2030. The Public Participation chapter outlines that process that I described moments ago in a little bit more detail. It highlights the participation opportunities, and it summarizes the key themes that came out of those conversations. So the major takeaways include the fact that connectivity in this area is key. We also want to make sure we're celebrating the water, as this area has the most shoreline in the county. We also want to treasure our open spaces. There's a large, a strong natural and environmental rhetoric in this area. We need to balance housing needs and also enhance quality of life. And in order to do that, we need to take a responsible and holistic approach to development. In the Recommendations chapter, this is where we're really trying to chart that path forward. We're taking those action items from Master Plan 2030, and we're translating them to the Area 11 context. We establish a vision that really tries to define and explain the character of what we want to see happen and evolve in Area 11 over the coming years. And it identifies major objectives and action items. They are divided into four different topics: connectivity, environment and open space, community, and economy. In addition, this chapter, you'll find a number of really great case studies and examples that show success stories from around the state and around the country where other places have been able to implement similar recommendations. And so those are really helpful to see how others have done it and maybe decide if we want to follow a similar path or what tweaks we want to make for Area 11. And then the Implementation chapter, this is going to be the really important one. This is the one that everybody who's going to be involved in making this plan happen are going to bookmark and refer to year after year as we try to make progress on the actions identified in this plan. It includes a really comprehensive table where we have the goals and actions outlined. And with each one, we're really trying to identify who are going to be the key players, who's taking the lead, and then who are the support partners, both county and state agencies, but also local community group partners as well. We talk about timeframes here, and wherever possible, we tried to tie each action item back to an existing funding resource or other resource that can be used to support the implementation of that action. And then lastly, we do have an appendix where we have a lot of juicy details, the maps, the... All of the public input exercises and survey results that we have are thrown into that comprehensive section, so you can see all of the findings that went into informing our decisions. So our next steps, we'll be back here on November 6th to have our official Planning Board hearing. After that, we're hoping to come back on the 20th for our Planning Board vote. And then the process after that is we're asking the Planning Board to make a recommendation to County Council to adopt this, in which it will ultimately live as an amendment to Master Plan 2030. So with that, I just want to thank you for your time, and I look forward to being back in a month and hearing what all of you have to say.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions, comments from the Board at this time? Ms. Brophy?
Just a quick question. Thank you for the presentation. So when you had the third-party consultants, what was their role in it? Like, were they there to kind of give you some of those area characteristics as well as recommendations, or how did they play a part in that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, Area 11 used a consultant team. That's because this is the first plan. We were really trying to set a template for the future area plans. Our subsequent area plans are going to be done entirely in-house. So the consultant team in this plan really served to help us to outline that template for how we would conduct the process. But then we did also have Strong and CHP Planning providing technical expertise. So they took a look at our transportation or environmental recommendations, and they provided a lot of the case studies that you'll see in the Recommendations chapter, because they just have that intimate knowledge of what has worked elsewhere.
Other questions? I have a question. How is it decided how to divide the county up? I mean, is this... Because that's a very disparate set of communities that you've got in...
Right. Yeah, so the outlines of the boundaries for each of the small area plans were drafted actually during the Master Plan 2030 process. And in order to identify what those boundaries were going to be, there was a deliberate effort to make sure that data boundaries were not really compromised, that we were taking into consideration if there were existing sustainable community plans, so that those aligned with the future boundaries. We did our best to also make sure that existing community group, like where they identify as their boundaries, weren't also being broken up. So we tried to get cohesive areas that also didn't divide neighborhoods or divide a sustainable community plan.
Anybody else? Ms. Grant?
Kind of piggybacking off of what Chairman Alupka said, was there... Did you notice, like, one community had more... Showed up more than other parts of the community, just to kind of understand where a lot of the input was coming?
Yeah, and we did it at the beginning. We noticed that in our online survey, and I believe at the first public meeting, we weren't seeing a lot of participation from Rossville in particular. We took a look at the total populations for each of the five sub-areas: White Marsh, Middle River, Bullies Quarters, Essex, and Rossville. And we compared that with the percentage of respondents, survey respondents, coming from those individual areas. And we could see that there was an over-representation, and I think it was Middle River and White Marsh, and an under-representation in Rossville. So that really informed our efforts moving forward and trying to really target Rossville in particular to get more involvement from those communities. Otherwise, I'd say at different phases, we had more vocal groups that just tended to be more involved at this public meeting or that. But in the end, I feel pretty pleased that we had a nice across-the-board representation from all the communities.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to set a public hearing.
Be it moved that a public hearing regarding the Small Area Plan 11 be set for Thursday, November 6, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. Do I have a second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll see you next month.
Other business, reports from the September 11th and October 9th meetings of Landmarks Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bear with me, this is a long one. At their September 11th meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue 15 certificates of appropriateness and one notice to proceed for the following properties: The Ash-Malsick property located at 201 Morris Avenue in Lutherville; The Black property located at 110 Dunkirk Road in Towson; The Boykin property located at 4709 Butler Road in Glendon; The Franz property located at 11906 Woodbury Place in Franklinville; The Camper property located at 1215 Oella Avenue in Ellicott City; The Hensler property located at 11908 Jericho Road in Upper Falls; The Stachowski property located at 214 Morris Avenue in Lutherville; The Church of Holy Comforter property located at 120 West Seminary Avenue in Lutherville; The Robbins property located at 1602 South Rolling Road in Hailtharp; The Kaczynski property located at 1433 Front Avenue in Lutherville; The Scott property located at 315 Central Avenue in Glendon; The Bannaker Park and Museum, it's a Baltimore County Department of Rec and Parks property, located at 300 Oella Avenue in Catonsville; The Boomer property located at 11 Cliffhome Road in Owings Mills; The Ferguson property located at 786 Glen Avenue in Ellicott City; The Thompson property located at 3613 Stony Brook Road in Randallstown; The Dyer property located at 206 Melanthan Avenue in Lutherville. In addition, at that meeting, the LPC voted to place the following property on the Baltimore County Preliminary Landmarks List following a public hearing. That's the Maroni House and Setting located at 3624 Lyrendell Club Road in Towson. At their October 9th meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue nine certificates of appropriateness to the following properties: The Sparks School Site located at 1,000 Sparks Road in Sparks; The Johnson Property located at 5173 Viaduct Avenue in Hailtharp; The Sartor Property located at 20101 Valley Mill Road in Freeland; The McGoey Property located at 37A Waw Avenue in Glendon; The Mecca Property located at 3611 Blackstone Road in Randallstown; The Warren Property located at 112 Melanthan Avenue in Lutherville; The Dumbarton House located at 300 Dumbarton Road in Towson; The Rogmy House located at 14941 York Road in Sparks; Another property on the Rogmy House located at 14943 York Road in Sparks. And then finally, the LPC at that meeting voted to support the addition of two properties to the National Register of Historic Places. Those properties are the Elisaberg property located at 11011 Baronet Road in Owings Mills and the Hailtharp Colored School located at 1900 Northeast Avenue in Hailtharp.
Thank you very much. I'll now let you catch your breath before we ask you to fill us in on the legislation passed by the County Council following our last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one's a doozy, too. Bill 4425, Zoning Regulations, Commercial Film Production, for the purpose of requiring a use permit for commercial film production in a residential zone regardless of the number of days a lot is used, requiring certain notices to be posted and generally relating to use permits for commercial film production. Bill 4525, Zoning Regulations, Uses Prohibited, MD 43 Overlay District, for the purpose of clarifying and adding certain prohibited uses in the MD 43 Overlay District and generally relating to the district. Bill 4825, Zoning Regulations, Solar Facilities, Prime Farmland, for the purpose of prohibiting solar facilities on land in the RC zones that constitute prime farmland and generally relating to solar facilities. Bill 4925, County Charter, Department of Agriculture Establishment, for the purpose of amending the county charter to establish a Department of Agriculture and generally relating to the Baltimore County Charter. Pursuant to Section 1202 of the Baltimore County Charter, the question of whether or not the charter is to be amended as proposed by this act shall be submitted to the voters of Baltimore County at the general election on November 3, 2026. Upon ratification by the voters of Baltimore County, this act shall become effective from and after the 30th day following the 2026 general election. Bill 5025, County Charter, Inspector General Appointment Board, for the purpose of amending the county charter to establish an Inspector General Appointment Board, providing for the appointment of members for the board and generally relating to the Office of the Inspector General and the Inspector General Appointment Board. Pursuant to Section 1202 of the Baltimore County Charter, the question of whether or not the charter is to be amended as proposed by this act shall be submitted to the voters of Baltimore County at the general election on November 3, 2026. Upon ratification by the voters, this act shall become effective from and after the 30th day following the 2026 general election. Bill 5225, Historical and Architectural Preservation, Issuance of Demolition Permits, for the purpose of clarifying the circumstances under which a demolition permit may be issued for a certain structure, requiring the County Council to vote to approve or disapprove the adoption of a structure to the Baltimore County Final Landmarks List, granting the County Landmarks Preservation Commission authority to delay the issuance of demolition permit for a certain period of time under certain circumstances and generally relating to county landmarks and historical and architectural preservation. Bill 5425, Correction of Zoning Map Notice by Councilmember, for the purpose of establishing a process for permitting a council member to make an interim corrective change to a zoning map approved during the comprehensive zoning map process under certain circumstances in order to return a property to its previous zoning, providing for the automatic expiration of the interim process, establishing a successor process for the County Council to initiate a corrective change to a zoning map, providing for the effective date of that process and generally relating to the comprehensive zoning map process. Bill 5525, Revision of Councilmanic Districts, for the purpose of revising and reconstituting the council manic districts of Baltimore County in accordance with the increase from seven to nine council districts beginning with the 2026 election, as required by Sections 206 and 207 of the county charter. The approved council map is provided in Exhibit A, and the demographic and population summary is provided in Exhibit B. Bill 5925, Zoning Regulations, Exceptions to Residential Transition Areas, for the purpose of adding an exception to the application of residential transition areas to include additions to certain existing private schools and generally relating to residential transition areas. Bill 6025, Zoning Regulations, Uses Permitted in the Residential Office RO Zones, for the purpose of permitting certain byright uses in the RO zone in the Liberty Road East Commercial Revitalization District and generally relating to uses in the RO zone. Bill 6125, Revitalization Property Tax Credit, for the purpose of making available a certain revitalization tax credit for properties within a state-designated transit-oriented development located in certain areas of the Owings Mills area or the Woodlong Commercial Revitalization District under certain circumstances, establishing the conditions and duration of the tax credit and generally relating to revitalization tax credits. Bill 6225, Zoning Regulations, Hookah and Vapor Lounges On-Site Security Personnel, for the purpose of requiring a hookah lounge or vapor lounge to have a certain amount of onsite licensed security guards present on the premise during certain hours of operation, exempting a hookah or vapor lounge from certain residential setback requirements under certain circumstances and generally relating to hookah and vapor lounges. Bill 6325, Zoning Regulations, CCC Overlay District, Restrictions on First Story Apartments, for the purpose of eliminating the prohibition on residential uses on the first story of a building in the CCC Overlay District if commercial uses are located in other buildings on the property or within a certain number of feet of the property and generally relating to the CCC Overlay District. Bill 6525, Historical and Architectural Preservation Appeals, for the purpose of permitting a certain decision of the Landmarks Preservation Commission to be appealed to the County Board of Appeals, requiring the Board of Appeals to issue a decision with a statement of grounds and facts establishing that the decision of the Board of Appeals is final and that the proceedings provided for are exclusive and generally relating to the county landmarks and historical and architectural preservation. Bill 4025, General Assembly, Inspector General Oversight of PCPS, a resolution of the Baltimore County Council encouraging the Maryland General Assembly to pass legislation during the 2026 legislative session, providing that the Baltimore County Board of Education is subject to the jurisdiction and oversight of the Baltimore County Office of the Inspector General. Resolution 4525, Amending the Towson Commercial Revitalization District, a resolution of the Baltimore County Council for the purpose of amending the boundary of the Towson CRD. The County Council has identified an area of land north of Georgia Core, south of West Pennsylvania Avenue, and east of Dixie Drive, and west of Bosley Avenue that has excellent redevelopment potential that is hereby added to the Towson CRD. Resolution 4625, Designation of Pikesville as a Sustainable Community, a resolution of the Baltimore County Council to support the designation of the community of Pikesville as a sustainable community for approval either by the State of Maryland, State of Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development or through the Smart Growth Subcabinet of the State of Maryland. The Council hereby endorses the designation of the area as a sustainable community as shown in Exhibit A and adopts the Sustainable Community Plan as described in the application and shown in Exhibit B. And that concludes the report.
Thank you very much. It was a lot to get through. Now, finally, you will fill us in on various staff updates.
Yes, thank you. So, first of all, I wanted to introduce everyone to Ms. Elise Browning. She's the new member of the Department of Planning and is going to be joining us, working with the Planning Board. So I'll let Elise briefly introduce herself.
Hi, it's nice to meet everyone. Like Taylor just said, I just started a little bit over a month ago. I am originally from Illinois, but spent the last four years in Tucson, Arizona, for college. But I'm excited to be here and be with this, all of you.
You're welcome.
And next up, we... So, Ms. Browning, Ms. Patrick and I, we've completed our... It's called the Open Meetings Act Compliance Course. We've been asked to notify the Board that we have completed that, and we are now Open Meeting Act certified. And then finally, we did circulate the 2026 schedule to you all earlier this week. We had two date changes due to holidays. Those are the first meeting in January and then the first meeting in April. Calendar holds were also sent to you, and we're working on getting those dates updated on the web. But if you have any questions or concerns, feel free to send me an email. That's it from me, and at this time, I would like to turn things over to Director Lafferty for some additional updates.
Thank you, Ms. Metley.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I just wanted to bring to your attention two items. On September 4th, the Planning Board adopted a set of recommendations for the Master Water and Sewage Plan involving Rice's Lane, Sweetair Road, and Park Heights Avenue. These recommendations were sent to the County Executive, as well as to the Director of Public Works, which is our standard procedure. The Director had some concerns about the recommendation that the Board had made. You may recall that the recommendation, which involved man or center, was to change the designation for water and sewer from... Well, retain, actually, the water of W72... Excuse me. Change the water designation from W7 to W3, but maintain the sewage designation of S7 to S7, with the condition that the county conduct a feasibility study to look at the cost and potential service areas for any proposed waterline extension. Ms. Buckler expressed concern because they do not have any funds programmed for such a feasibility study. That, and she's requested the Office of Law to look into that recommendation. We do not have anything from the Office of Law that won't be shared with the Board members. Secondly, one of the resolutions that Ms. Comar actually read to you or read to you without is a resolution introduced by... That was introduced by Councilman David Marks pursuant to a piece of legislation he introduced that would enable a County Council member to take actions within a limited period of time to return the zoning designation having been... After it was designated in the CZMP process. In the CZMP 2024, there were three issues that Councilman Marks introduced and voted to support. These are three properties along Philadelphia Road, issues 5-095, 5-171, and a portion of 5-096. By this resolution, Mr. Marks, Councilman Marks, would have the zoning designation returned to the original zoning classifications that were before both the Planning Board and by the planning staff. In each instance, neither the planning staff nor the planning board recommended any change in the zoning, although the councilmen did move forward and change the zoning in the council vote that August of 2024. By this resolution, this will be reversed to the zoning that was in place prior to his introduction of those issues. That resolution should be voted on at the council meeting on Monday, October 20.
Thank you for those updates. Do you have any other issues, motions to discuss at this time? If not, that is the conclusion of our agenda. We will reconvene for our Capital Improvement Program Citizen Input Meeting at 5:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
You all back here in 15 minutes.
Welcome, everyone. The Citizen Input Meeting for the fiscal year 2027 to 2032, Capitol The citizen input meeting for the fiscal year 2027 to 2032, capital budget and program is now called to order. My name is Emily Brophy and I am the Chair of the Planning Board Subcommittee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. We will begin the hearing tonight with a roll call to account for the present members of the board. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array?
Aye.
Mr. Bratty?
Aye.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel?
Aye.
Mr. Hinton?
Aye.
Mr. Holupka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Lilly?
Aye.
Ms. Minesses?
Aye.
Ms. Naris not here, Mr. Schulman? Mr. Tenen?
Aye.
Thank you. We would now like to welcome the agency representatives here with us this evening and ask that they each introduce themselves with their name and the agency they are representing. So I will start over here to the right, if you don't mind, please.
Major Jeff Hartman with the Police Department.
Chris Martin, Director of the Office of Information Technology.
Brady Locker, Environmental Protection and Sustainability.
Good evening, Sonia Alcantara Antoine, CEO of Baltimore County Public Library.
Good evening, Lauren Buckler. I'm the Director for Public Works and Transportation.
Good evening, Bob Smith, Director of Recreation and Parks.
I'm Melissa Hoppe, Vice President of Administrative Services at the Community College of Baltimore County.
Good evening, my name is Joe Dixon, the Monitor, Servicefire Chief.
Thank you, we're happy to have you with us. First this evening, Mr. Chris Weaver from the Department of Planning will give a brief overview of the capital budget and program process. Following his presentation, board members will have a chance to ask questions and then members of the public will have the opportunity to speak. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Weaver.
Good evening, members of the board, department heads and their representatives. My name is Chris Weaver and I will give you a brief summary of the capital improvement program process. Capital Improvement Program is a multi-year planning program of capital expenditures needed to replace or expand the county's public infrastructure. It is a six-year plan that is updated every year. Capital budget is the term used to indicate the first year of the capital program. A capital project involves the construction of physical and permanent improvements for public use. Project can also be a park, major maintenance project, land acquisition, or government buildings such as schools, library, police, or fire stations. There are many benefits to having a capital program. It allows the county to plan ahead for the construction of facilities and how they will be funded. It also allows the county to look at all of the projects together, which allows properties' priorities to be established and enables the county to coordinate the timing and funding of projects. For example, if a road needs to be repaved and the water main under the pavement needs to be replaced, the county will schedule the water main project to be completed first. It also fosters cooperation with other governments. Good example is the coordination between the county and Maryland State Highway Administration in implementing streetscape projects. CIP is also a tool for implementing the master plan and community plans which call for capital improvements. Funding for capital projects comes from a number of different sources, including the general fund, which is money the county collects from taxes, and general obligation bonds, which is money the county borrows. Metropolitan district funds and bonds come from the regional metropolitan district, which constructs and maintains water and sewer facilities. Other funding comes from special assessments that are targeted for specific types of improvements. Outside funding can come from a variety of sources. Some are federal and some are state. For some projects, developers contribute funding and others where the county has petitioned or was petitioned to provide the improvement, such as sidewalks or alleyways, the petitioner contributes a portion of the funding. This chart illustrates the amount of funding supplied through each of the major funding sources. Bulk of the funding comes through general obligation bonds and metropolitan bonds. This chart depicts the amount of expenditures planned for the current six-year program by category. Of the 3.2 billion total, sewer system projects account for the most, followed by schools, water system projects, and other projects. The other projects category includes community improvements, bridges culverts and grade separations, storm drains, refuse disposal, land preservation, and waterway improvements. This chart illustrates the county's annual budgeting process. There are two distinct budgets, the current expense or operating budget and the capital program budget. The planning board is only involved in the capital program process. The CIP process is laid out in the county code. First step is tonight's citizen input meeting. Following the citizen input meeting, the agencies that have capital budget, budgets formulate their requests for the upcoming, for the coming update. Budget office then forwards the agency requests to the planning board. Planning board reviews the program, formulates recommendations, and sends them back to the budget office. When the upcoming fiscal year is one where a referendum will be held, the planning board also forwards its recommendations for the borrowing amounts. Budget office reviews the planning board recommendations with the county administrative officer. The program is then reviewed by the county executive. Between 30 and 90 days prior to the submission of the proposed budget to the county council, county executive shall hold at least two public hearings in two separate geographic locations. Executive then presents the capital budget and program along with the current expense budget and budget message to the county council. Budget message contains an explanation of any projects that were modified by the planning board recommendations. County council holds a public hearing, which is another opportunity for public input, and then votes to approve the budget and program by June 1st. Planning board has the ability to add, modify, or delete projects and funding amounts, while the county council can only decrease or delete projects. That is why it's important to have citizen input at the beginning of the process. Bond money is approved by the voters every two years. This upcoming process is considered an on-year because the bond levels for projects will be approved by voters in the 2026 election. And that is the last of my slides.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Does the board have any questions at this time?
Yes.
Easy peasy for you. If there are no questions, we will now call upon those of you who have completed the sign-in sheet located in the Jefferson Building lobby to speak on this topic. Speakers will be called in the order that you registered. Please remember to limit your comments to two minutes or less. Ms. Bensley will have a timer on the screen for you. Please provide your name and the organization you represent, if applicable, and we are going to go ahead and start with our first speaker.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brophy. First up, we have Jeffrey Budnick.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me tonight. I will speak quickly. I'm here in two capacities, the Ruxton Riderwood Lake Roland Area Improvement Association and also the Lake Roland Nature Council. Regarding the association in March of 2023, the planning board required us to incorporate a addition to our community plan of $500,000 capital request for a sidewalk and a crosswalk at Stevenson Lane at Charles Street to facilitate people coming from Towson being able to access Lake Roland. Based on the work that has occurred at Lake Roland Park over the last decade, attendance has increased exponentially. I can sense Director Smith nodding out of my peripheral eye, and from that standpoint, we need to provide a safe way for people to have walkability to the park. Your board made it a requirement for us to include that component. Director Buckler has been very kind to be communicating with the executive director of the association regarding state right of ways and other aspects that exist there, delegate Forbes regarding funding, but as of today, there is still no crosswalk or sidewalk. So just so you know, our community plan was adopted, so I will be returning annually with this request. The second piece that I want to talk about is flooding. Being that we're the intersection of Main and Main at Lake Roland, stormwater that hits the sidewalk outside this building flows into the park. Anything up in Owings Mills, the park. Cockeysville, the park. What we've come to realize is there is a significant issue with rainwater not being retained upstream, and it's becoming incrementally more problematic. Brady Loker, Lauren Buckler, Bob Smith helped us facilitate a stream clean project where we, as a volunteer group, removed 90 tons of debris that were causing a flooding issue.
Sorry, I'm not.
No problem.
I'm going to cut you off just because we have so many speakers tonight.
Thank you on that request. I don't know the funding requirement, but flooding needs to be looked at. Have a great night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Ms. Patricia Farley.
Good evening, everybody. I was here just two weeks ago for Manor Shopping Center and you all voted thankfully nine to four to recommend to the county that the water and sewer designation changed from W7 to W3 with a feasibility cost attached. And I think Mr. LaFerty spoke about it earlier, that it's now in the hands of the Office of Law in order to see how we would get monies to do that. I wanted to just bring people up to date. I'm here specifically to ask that monies be allotted for that study. When Exxon happened, the State of Maryland penalized or cost made Exxon give money. I hope that the county took a portion of that because that could be funds that, to be used for this feasibility study. I also wanted to bring you up to date, I would ask for a half a million dollars to do this, but I also want to qualify what we're asking for. After our meeting two weeks ago, we did have the Jacksonville Community Association had a meeting and we talked things through. What we're not looking for is, we're not looking to bring water up from Lock Raven or do a piping system. I think there's a consensus that we're building in the community as more knowledge gets out for community well for the commercial area. I can't speak specifically because we're still in the initial discussions of that, but what happened in that meeting is there was a lot of talk about real water issues around the whole area and Exxon being a cause in my mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have George Purtakakis. Purtakakis, and I do apologize if I pronounce your name wrong. It probably happened more than once. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is George Purtakakis. I have, I have worked for Baltimore City, Baltimore County, State of Maryland. I have found plenty of years doing the type of thing that I'm going to talk to you today. Ebenezer Road between Palaskey Highway and Route 7. It's, it's a, it's a major, it's a lot of activity there. Many homes above Route 7, a lot of activity. Wawa is going across the street on Palaskey Highway and Ebenezer Road. My clients, Mr. and Mrs. Fem, they want to do a elite type of spa and the utilities there, they're all tangled up. We need to improve the utilities on the street and we need about $2.1 million to make a tremendous improvement which will help pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic. Therefore, respectfully, we ask that you allow the funding for this type of project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, next up, we have Shirley C. with the Liberty Senior Center. Kathorn, I couldn't read it, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Welcome.
I'm Shirley Kathorn. I am the President of the Liberty Senior Council, serving my second two-year term, and I just thank for the opportunity to speak. I'm here on behalf of the Liberty Senior Center Council and the 2018 men's seniors we serve. I am testifying today with an urgent and exciting proposal or request for 15 million over three years to construct a state-of-the-art new senior center facility. This new building is not just a dream, it is an absolute necessity driven by an unprecedented growth in our membership and community engagement. Our current facility has become a victim of its own success. The demand for our programs, services, and community space has surged, stretching out current resources to the breaking point. We are now at a critical junction where the physical limitations of our building are beginning to restrict our ability to serve the very population that relies on us most. The data from the past year clearly illustrates this overwhelming growth. Our membership in a two-year span, we have grown from 16,000 to over our current 2018 active membership. Total yearly attendance has soared by 15,847, reaching an incredible 61,985 visits. That's how many people traffic in our senior center for all of the activities we provide. This remarkable growth is of course a testament of the quality and impact of our program, but it underscores our stark reality, and that is our facility is no longer adequate. We are forced to schedule programs back-to-back, limited classes sizes due to the space, and we now occupy space for 10 of our classes of the 68 classes we service, and that's at the Roundles Town Community Center. So again, a new modern facility will allow us to not only accommodate our current membership, but also to expand our reach and offer essential new services.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, I realized I skipped someone. Next up, we have Thomas Fekiti.
Welcome.
Good enough. Good evening. I'm Tom Fekker, President of the Pikesville Improvement Corporation, a nonprofit, community-based organization dedicated to the revitalization of Pikesville in line with the Revitalization Action Plan. In line with our strategic vision of safe, clean, walkable, and vibrant downtown, we request the following. Installation of a camera surveillance system on Rice Street Road from City Line to Old Court Road to assist our police officers as deterrents and an investigation tool. To proceed with the installation of sidewalks along Sudbrook Lane from Sudvale to Rice Street, the engineering should be complete very soon. Working with SHA as necessary, install ADA-compliant pedestrian crossings along the Rice Street Road between McHenry and Sudbrook and the side streets. The action plan recognizes the need for a walking biking trail connecting the local pocket parks with the metro and with downtown Pikesville. We urge start on a visionary project by funding an engineering study. The need to address chronic speeding along local roadways all along the county is well-known. Please purchase five solar-powered mobile vehicle speed monitoring devices per precinct as these devices have demonstrated benefits in slowing traffic. Further, we urge a study to identify problem roads and recommend a set of traffic calming solutions that could rapidly be adapted. Acquire the unused property at One Walker Avenue, the cap stand in Pikesville, and convert it into a non-restricted public parking lot serving the core business district. And finally, we continue in our conviction that public art will serve a critical element in Pikesville's revitalization and request the allocation of funds for additional works.
Perfect timing, thank you, sir.
Next up, we have Gary English.
Good evening, board. My name is Gary English. I am a member of Liberty Senior Center Executive Board, and I stand before you all requesting that when they build the new recreation center, Mr. Smith, that we would like to see a pool table, four pool tables, and a room set aside for seniors that like to do things in the evenings. All right, because the senior centers, they close at 4 o'clock. So sometimes we, seniors, like to go out and shoot pool at the top of my shirt, right? So we're asking that y'all... and shoot pool at the top of my shirt, right? So we're asking that y'all consider having that. And I will volunteer my time and help setting up the pool room, as well as rules and regulations, and so there won't be any conflicts there, just as I do at Liberty Senior Center. And Mr. Mack, he wants to say a brief word on my time.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Francis McGlendon. I'm retired from the military, and when I retired, I had no place to go. My wife told me, stop standing in the house. You go out and do something. And then I found the Senior Center of Liberty, and I enjoy each and every day that I go there to shoot pool and enjoy the people, the friends. And we have people that's 90 years old. We have people of all ages enjoying themselves and stuff like that. And when y'all get old and retire and stuff like that, you have a place to go at Liberty Senior Center. So thank you all. And please, we need those pool tables, and we need that new center. Please help us get that center. And I enjoy y'all all with y'all beautiful faces. God bless y'all all.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Charles Cropfielder.
Good afternoon, Chuck Cropfielder. I'm the president of the Lenovo Improvement Association. It's been established since 1956, so we've been around for a little while. What I'm looking for is to make our community ADA compliant and the sidewalks finished and completed within our community. We have an elementary school called Fullerton Elementary School, and a lot of the kids go to Fullerton, and they walk up Henry Avenue. We had the county come in and redo some intersections, and they put in handicap accessibility, but they didn't put in no sidewalks, so it goes up the grass. So we'd like to have those finished if possible. And I do appreciate the Newark community centers around Hazelwood and Escapewood Park. Thank you very much for those. They're a nice, our community enjoys them too. With that, I'll end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Wes Golkert.
Good evening. My name is Wes Guckert. I'm here today to respectfully request $2.1 million in capital improvement program for Ebenezer Road in eastern Baltimore County. Ebenezer Road, as you may know, is a critical connector that serves thousands of residents, schools, churches, and local businesses each day. Unfortunately, it's become increasingly congested with long backups during morning and afternoon peak hours, and has developed serious safety issues, including a high number of turning movement and rear-end crashes resulting from limited sight distances and inadequate lane capacity. Traffic volumes on this corridor will increase due to new residential and commercial development, yet the roadway has not been improved to meet current or future demands, especially that which is included in the county's plan. Without action, congestion and safety problems will continue to worsen, impacting not only drivers, but also emergency responders and local quality of life. The proposed improvements, adding turn lanes, widening key segments, upgrading intersection, and improving both pedestrian and bicycle connectivity will enhance both safety and mobility. These investments will also support continued economic growth in the eastern portion of the county and better serve the residents who rely on Ebenezer Road every day. So I urge that $2.1 million be allocated in the capital improvement program to advance design and construction for the Ebenezer Road project. Thank you for your time, and really, thank you for your service, because what you're doing here is really, really important, your continued commitment to investing in the county. Thank you.
Next up, we have Chantel Mason.
Hello. I am Chantel Mason. I am the president of Security Wood Lawn Business Association. It goes by SWBA as well. We are real heavy into our revitalization efforts and promoting and supporting our businesses that are in wood lawn. We are situated within two type of projects, the Reimagine Wood Lawn Village Project and the Reimagine Security Square Mall Project. Over the past three years, we have been awarded over $600,000 in grant funds, and we are able to do that because we use the money and resources for what we say that we're going to use them for. I'm standing before you today basically to say hello, and you will see me again. And with the growth and the changes that are happening in wood lawn, we are requesting to have a lawn item within the budget for future staffing or a future location. Reason being, especially with the Reimagine Security Square Mall Project, there will be hundreds of businesses that will be displaced or moved around during the course of the redevelopment. And so having a future location and having staffing to support them as a transition around wood lawn, because we want them to stay in wood lawn, but also to continue to be the mediator between what Baltimore County, the decision-makers of the departments, as well as the businesses themselves. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Saul Passay.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Saul Pass. I sit on the board of a nonprofit called Baltimore County Disc Golf. You might have heard of us. We're at every single meeting. So we are working on a couple of things right now. We're asking for funding for just disc golf in general around the county. If anybody doesn't know what disc golf is, throwing frisbees into metal baskets. It sounds trivial, but we just successfully worked with Bob Smith and his department to install a disc golf course in Cockeysville called County Home Disc Golf Course. Last year, it came in, out of the 16,000 disc golf courses that are in the world, it came in at number 256 of the most played disc golf courses and number two in the state. So we are, it's a very growing sport, and Baltimore County is leading the way into the future for disc golf. The next project that we have working with Bob and his team is Rice Street Regional Park. There is to be slated to have a disc golf course go in there. We've secured funding for $100,000 from the county already for that project. We are seeking another $100,000 to go into that project. We know how much a disc golf course costs because we put one in with the county at County Home. So, and this course is going to be three times as big as that course. So that's what we plan to do. We're also asking for money for other courses that are in the county. There's one called Silver Creek Park in Pikesville. And this course is a seven-hole course. That is an old course that got put in and got neglected. Not too many people know about it. We've revived it. There's a Facebook page for it now through Baltimore County Disc Golf, and we will, hopefully, we can get in some tee pads there. Right now, it's just baskets out in the field. Nobody knows where to throw from. So we'd like to put in tee pads there, get some money for disc golf in Baltimore County.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Ricky Kruger.
Good evening. My name is Ricky Kruger. I'm the president of the West Wind River Community Association located in Middle River, which just celebrated its 100th year anniversary. I'm here asking the board that they consider replacing our water main pipes sooner than later. Our existing pipes are now in the ground, have been in the ground for over decades. I'm not sure how long it's been there, but you know, obviously, we've been there 100 years, so it's been there probably since water's come into that community. And over those years, we've had a lot of flooding in that area. We're at low level, and it's, those pipes have outlasted their service life. Over time, the corrosion, the shifting soils, and years have taken its toll. What the community is seeking is that we get the pipes replaced. We've had a lot of water issues, reduced water pressures, and over the past seven years, we've had over 21 water main breaks. Now, recently, the one, latest one, happened at the end of July, beginning of August, and it was pretty catastrophic. It caused, happened in front of our house, obviously. It caused one of my pickup trucks to get totaled. I had some relatives in town that totaled their SUV. I had a brand-new truck still sitting in the parking lot, not even a year old. It is now still in the shop since August. It's getting repainted, six new windows, and a new bed liner. It wasn't just a water main break. It was a spout that went for about two hours unnoticed, and then it took the city about another four hours to come to turn it off. So needless to say, we've had rocks all in our yard to shoot. And so replacing the pipes now will take, will allow the county to be more proactive, and then instead of reactive when something fails. So with that, I'd like to have your consideration of replacing the water main pipe. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the name of the association? It's West, it's West Twin River down there, Harrowood Park area. Thank you.
Next, we have Caitlin Clem Kelner.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Clem Kelner, and I am on the Board of Directors of the Lenovo Improvement Association. I am here tonight with multiple members of our Board of Directors and our officers. Per the Overly-Fullerton Community Plan, it actually says that there is to be a CP, or CIP inventory done by the Department of Public Works and the Overly-Fullerton Community Associations. We actively have a survey out in the field to get feedback to provide to the planning board about what needs to be done in our community per the community plan. So far, we have seen responses about traffic calming and safety. We've had multiple traffic calming studies done in our neighborhood, told that we're not qualified for anything, and then nothing is ever followed up in terms of other passive calming measures. We would like to see that happen, given the fact that Fullerton Elementary School is right in the heart of our neighborhood, along with Overly High School being our local high school there. In addition, we're seeing responses about sidewalks, crosswalks, and lighting. Lighting is actually listed in the community plan as a spot that needs to be addressed. It actually specifically says that low profile, install low-profile lighting on neighborhood streets. There are streets in our community where you have to put your high beams on just to drive through. With a school right there, a senior center, and lack of sidewalks that are completed, I don't think that asking for lighting is too much for our community association. In addition, we are also looking for reinvestment in our parks and green space. The number of responses that we have gotten for reinvestment within our parks has been our highest number of responses even over the traffic calming. This would include a more accessible entrance to Lenovo Park from Terrace Drive, which also fits into the community plan for creating, providing improved access to existing parks. I please strongly suggest that you review the Overly-Fullerton Community Plan. It's been in place since 2009, and a lot of times, we feel neglected with it. Thank you.
Next up, we have Althea Page.
Good afternoon. I'm Althea Page. I'm a representative of the Baltimore County, Baltimore, no, got that wrong. Okay, Bay Country HOA. The HOA is a pumping station only, and we're requesting that Baltimore County take over the pumping station. Bay Country is a wonderful middle-class community in eastern Baltimore County, right before the Hammerman area of Gunpowder State Park. There are 28 homes that are involved in being on this pumping station that the developer has been maintaining for the last 38 years. The developer does not want to do this anymore, and has notified us that we have to take it over. The pumping station has been completely replaced with an upgraded grinder pumps, a new control panel, and a new enclosure in 2023. It is in compliance with Baltimore County standards. Our wastewater pumping station is operated under contract with Maryland Environmental Services. Councilman David Marks recommended that we attended this meeting to ask to have this taken over. We would be happy to answer any questions, and I've kept it brief because he's told me to. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mia Walsh.
Hi, thanks. Good evening. I'm Mia Walsh, and I am the president of Cromwell Valley Park Council. Cromwell Valley Park is 3.2 miles from where we are this evening. It's 460 acres with 16 buildings on the landmark preservation list. We are also on the National Register of Historic Places in our Lime Kiln Bottom. The county has done an amazing job funding infrastructure for the upcoming years, including paving, parking, et cetera, but we have several buildings that are in disrepair in fear of demolition by neglect in worst-case scenarios. So we are requesting between $1.2 and $1.5 million for our historic Merrick Bank Barn, starting with infrastructure first and exterior, just to get it stabilized. A second phase of that ideally would be occupancy, but we know that that's a much bigger ask. The second half of our park has six national, I mean, historic preservation for Baltimore County buildings that have not seen any help at all from the county in the 10 years that I've been on the board. The paint, the wood, it's rotting. It's an amazingly beautiful piece of property, a white, big, beautiful farm that you pass drive in Cromwell Bridge Road, and it is in serious need of love and care. We, as the council, are advocating for, as much as we can, to get these buildings fixed and repaired. We've done an engineering study in 2019 showing all of the trusses, the wood, the rot, the roofing, all kinds of pieces of the specific, the Merrick Bank Barn, that have to be addressed. And I know that county at one point did their own engineering study. And that's my time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mark Donovan.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Mark Donovan. I am representing the Natural History Society of Maryland, where I'm a board member and project manager for ongoing renovation. The Natural History Society currently is renovating the building, and it is a $2.5 million project that will be completed at the end of this capital year or calendar year. It will be a truly remarkable upgrade to the facility on Bel Air Road. In fiscal year '23 and '24, the county executive budgeted $1.5 million to design a total renovation of the facility and to pay for much of Phase One, the exterior renovation. Collectively, the county, the state, and private giving contributed to this project. Next, we have the interior renovation, and that's what I'm here to ask the county for. That is a much more expensive, as with the Cromwell Valley program. There are, it's a 100-year-old wooden building, and the costs are over $7 million to do a total renovation of the interior, and this will make it all ADA accessible, new galleries. This is really to create a museum of natural history for the state of Maryland. This is really to create a museum of natural history for the state of Maryland. And so 2029 is a centenary of the Natural History Society. We have been around for 100 years in various homes, rented properties, et cetera. But anyway, this renovation aligns with the county master plan for the overly Fullerton neighborhoods and the recently updated Sustainable Communities Plan for the Quality of Life Outcome and Strategy D, which states to continue the ongoing initiative to redevelop the Natural History Society property to create a museum for the state. We're asking for county, state and private funding. And the next round, we're going to be asking for 1.5 million as a state leadership grant from the county.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Linda Davis.
Good evening. I'm Linda Davis, and I'm following up with Mark Donovan's comments. I'm here on behalf of the Natural History Society of Maryland to advocate for inclusion of our Museum of Natural Sciences project in the budget. First, thank you to Baltimore County and to the state for past support of the project. We are a vibrant, financially stable nonprofit in the first phase of renovating the exterior of our building at 6908 Bel Air Road in overly. We have a long and successful track record of serving the community and the county. I am here to request your continued support. Why? Our current building project reinforces the strategies identified in the Sustainability Community Plan that Mark referenced. And we are indeed an important community asset. Our natural history collections from shells and minerals to birds and black bears contain 200,000 specimens, which are stored and managed on site. Our exhibits are open to the public more than 120 days each year. At least 5,000 guests visited the museum in 2024. Our museum has free admission. Our programs include field experiences, courses, workshops. In 2024, we serve 6,500 program participants. We serve local scout troops, overly community association, K-12 and college classes, county teachers and on and on. We are an economic asset, drawing visitors from across the region to our exhibits and programs. We're a cultural asset, offering a museum experience to an underserved part of Baltimore County. We are an educational asset. Our classroom fossil kits, for example, have reached an estimated 8,000 K-12 students. But the centerpiece of our programs and our collections is the building. We need the county's continued support to continue developing the museum in that building, along with the continued state foundation and private donors' support. County's support will enable us to build the natural science museum that the county so richly deserves. Thank you for considering this request.
Next up, we have Al Barnes.
Good evening. I'm Al Barnes. I'm Randall. Good evening. I'm Al Barnes. I'm a Randallstown resident and acting president for the Kings Park Community Association. I'm here to speak about the Randallstown Aquatic Center. Both the Aquatic Center and the Randallstown Community Center are wonderful buildings. Only problem with the Aquatic Center, the dressing rooms are really too small. It's a major problem for both the men's and the ladies' rooms. But the, being that the ladies' room have 10 times as many users, it's especially a problem for them. We've been talking to the county since 2022 about trying to do something about those dressing rooms. And the last we heard in August of '24 is that money was found to at least study the situation. And that was from Samantha O'Neil, Johnny O's representative. And we would like to find out what had gone on since then and requests, if wasn't funds available through Parks and Recreation that you all consider providing some funds of improvement. Because as I said, the buildings are really nice, but they have the problem with the locker rooms being inadequate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Maureen Tesoro.
Hi, my name is Maureen Tesoro. I represent the Ruxton Riderwood Lake Roland Area Improvement Association. The association is asking for a stormwater management plan for the intersection of Ruxton and Circle Roads. Funds are needed to plan flood mitigation projects. The area floods during heavy rain events, and in the past five years, three cars have flooded while driving on the road, and they've required the fire department to get involved and rescue them. As was mentioned earlier, I'm also here to advocate for funding a crosswalk across Charles Street at Stevenson Lane with a sidewalk added so people can walk north to Woodbrook Lane, where there's a pedestrian entrance to Lake Roland Park. We are aware that Charles Street is a state road, so MDOT needs to be involved. But we are asking for this funding. The Rogers Forge Community Association has also asked for this project in the past. This project was required by the county planning department to be put to our community plan. So we're just asking for that funding to be designated for that project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Margie Lane, Margie Wayne.
Just talk.
Yep.
Okay. Good evening. I'm here to talk about the concerns it needs, excuse me, for parking at Cockeysville Senior Center. Baltimore County Department of Aging, that's better, right? Okay. A parking garage was initiated, first initiated as a solution by the Department of Aging. Space will be needed to build the walls of the said building, which will reduce the parking lot dimensions that we already have, cutting down the width and the length to install the cement blocks, bricks on top of the existing parking lot. We would lose parking spaces to allow for an elevator and stairway, probably a quarter of the top and lower level. And a road will have to be built for access. Maintenance on this building for the elevator, stairway and lights will cost Baltimore County Department of Aging. This is an assumption on our part. If the cost of the maintenance falls on the center, we will not be able to support our programs. Each parking space needs to have the same length and width that we presently have in our parking lots. We are not a shopping center. These spaces need to afford enough room for our aging members using wheelchairs, walkers and canes. If you build a garage with an extra lever, Warren Place residents will more than likely park in the lower lever during inclement weather because they now have a garage, again complimenting the issue of parking. Suggestions, get rid of the signs around Warren Place that state your car will be towed if you park here. That allows us to be more flexible with the parking spaces for all people coming to the center, Warren Place and the ballparks. There are many areas around the tennis, pickleball courts that will allow for parking. People are already parking on the grass in these areas. We could utilize slanted parking for at least another 12 spaces behind the courts, and there's more. We are a large group of useful people who have come together in our retirement years to laugh, play, work hard, be effective members of the Department of Aging Council at Cockeysville, and we have knowledge. We are an effective group that has worked professionally and are willing to work with the Department of Aging and the Parks and Recreation to resolve this issue. Please work with us. Call me if you have questions.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Ken Gourd. Gourd.
Woefully unprepared, as I did not know what to expect, sorry. Because I think you're involved in talking about the. Oh, I'm talking about the same thing that Margie just mentioned, which is essentially parking at the Warren Road Cockeysville Senior Center. And this is merely a suggestion that I won't go through in detail because you need to hand out to see it. But we have 28 spaces. They're talking about an additional level in that parking lot, which would add another 28, but we would lose some spaces due to the stairs and elevator. Instead, we have grassy spaces around that are mapped out and taken pictures of where you can see that we can add 28 parking spots with no problem. I think it would be much cheaper, much more effective and less disruptive. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
If you want any more copies. Beautiful. Thank you. Hand them to whoever. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Robert Krasnansky. I apologize.
On behalf of Kingsville Rails to Trails, we thank Baltimore County for its continued investment in safe, connected and vibrant communities. We respectfully urge two actions in the SIP. Increase SIP allocations for bicycle, pedestrian and trail infrastructure in both streets and highways and parks, preservation and greenway classifications. Structure these allocations transparently as distinct line items or subprograms so that progress can be tracked and accounted, accountability maintained. These two steps will move Baltimore County from vision to implementation of the 2023 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Several Kingsville projects in that plan include North Rolling Road, Edmondson Ave, Ingleside Ave and Kingsville Community Park. With increased and clearly structured funding, Baltimore County can deliver on its commitment to safe, sustainable and connected active transportation. Thank you.
Next up, we have Kimberly Jones.
Thank you. My name is Kimberly. I serve as the Business Sponsorship Lead for the Holland Hill Community Association, currently representing over 700 homes and 11 businesses that frame the Hazelwood Business Corridor. Today, I'm joined with our President Rachel Keats. And shortly before the meeting started, we had business owner Amir Shahazid of Charlie's Convenience, who was just called shortly for a medical emergency. So our prayers are with him. But Hazelwood is a neighborhood in motion. Post-COVID, Holland Hills Dedicated Community has rebuilt an association which is committed to safety, community and growth. Even after experiencing a violent crime in 2022, our community spirit remains unshaken. We are currently enjoying the view of new homes, new grocery store, a skate park and recreational center to welcome our youth, all with the mission to bring and keep the community stronger. The revitalization project that's scheduled for Hazelwood Business Corridor will not just be about recovery, it'll be the seal to a rebirth. I'd like to request, I'd like to list the request for the funding, support and technical assistance on a couple of aligned priorities that have been mentioned in the Baltimore County Master Plan for 2030. Currently, the economy outcome two, Strategy A, provide funding and technical assistance to local and business property owners to improve the conditions of commercial facades and infrastructure. Enhance beautification efforts such as seasonal plantings, public art, streetscaping, installation of security cameras, provide funding for cameras and installation where required. Identify areas to target new automatic, I mean automobile traffic calming improvements, take two. Provide funding and technical assistance for physical improvements that display the brand identity in the commercial areas gateway improvements and wayfinding signage and light pole banners. Thank you.
Next up, we have Esther Peyton.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Esther Peyton. I serve as the Vice President of the Hazelwood Park East Community Association for the last six years. Our association borders Holland Hills to the east, so I'm piggybacking on Kim's statement. As a resident of this community since 1999, I welcome the Hazel Avenue revitalization project I call HARP. We would like to see the project expand its boundaries to the east to include the Freedom Church area. Additional traffic continues to originate from this area, which is east of Radice Key and Hazelwood Avenue. And they also frequent the businesses that are in the corridor, including Hazelwood Inn, Charlie Brown's and the churches. Not considering the expanded corridor may result in unintended traffic and safety issues. Safety is our community's biggest concern. The corridor is lacking adequate lighting, specifically across from the Hazelwood Skate Park. Thank you, Buff Smith. We also have a T-intersection at Cynthia Terrace and Hazelwood Avenue that has no lighting. In addition to lighting, speeding is also a concern. The westbound traffic coming from the I-95 bridge does not have any deterrent to slow traffic down from Waybridge Avenue to Sedonia Avenue. The speed camera that was in front of McCormick Elementary School photographing eastbound traffic was removed this summer, but it is still needed. Or maybe a street speed trailer could be set up occasionally to control speeding. Accessibility is an issue, but most of the curb cuts or the ADA ramps are in fair to good shape. But the east and westbound corners of Amelia Avenue and Hazelwood Avenue are missing the required truncated dome mats. On Radice Key, adjacent to the Hazelwood Inn, we need sidewalks. And the entire facility is just one huge driveway. I'd love to consider having that done. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Stephen Morgan.
Hi, good evening, board. My name is Stephen Morgan, and I'm here on behalf of the Reisterstown Improvement Association, also known as Reisterstown Main Street. Since 2010, our organization has worked together to strengthen Reisterstown by supporting our property owners, business owners and community members who live and shop here. We're requesting that the following projects be included in the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2027 through 2032. First, we'd like to acquire the property at 234 Main Street, where we currently lease space. This would make it our permanent home. The building already welcomes residents, residents and visitors and serves as a meeting place for local nonprofits, public events and workshops. We also curate a small museum there to show our town's history. Second, we would like to partner with Baltimore County Recreation and Parks to add, to officially add Woodley Avenue Park to their system so planning can begin. This park will serve as the southern end of Franklin Woodland Trails, which starts at Reisterstown Library and provide open green space for everyone to enjoy. Third, we hope to work with the county to explore ways to expand parking and to support our growing number of businesses and visitors. And finally, we're developing coworking and maker space opportunities, beginning with the studios at 234. This space will give small business owners, artists and local creators a place to work, collaborate and grow their ideas locally and encourage entrepreneurial opportunities right here in town, keeping creativity and innovation in Reisterstown. These projects will help strengthen our main street, support local businesses and preserve the character that makes Reisterstown such a great place to live and visit. Thank you for your time.
And our final speaker of the evening is Lakeisha Waddell.
Hello, my name is Lakeisha Waddell. I used to be the ambassador for Brandon Scott's Family and Children's Success Agency in Baltimore City, but I am a resident of Owens Mills, Baltimore County. I'm sorry, this is in my notes. I'm so sorry. Okay. All right. So my name is Lakeisha Waddell, and I'm a resident of Owens Mills in Baltimore County. I care deeply about the growth and the safety of our community, especially for our young people and the families. I'd like to propose creating a local community and recreation space called Owens Mills Rise and Thrive Center. Right now, many students have, many students go home after school without the help of supervision they need. Parents often lack near, I'm sorry. Parents often lack nearby resources for education, career or family support. We do have the Randallstown Resource Center, which serves a great purpose, but I'd like to see something more intimate, right in Owens Mills, specifically focused on students and parents, because as we know, our students shape the future of our neighborhood. The center will provide after-school tutoring, homework for students, help with homework for students. for students, STEM and creative workshops to build skills and confidence, a safe supervised recreational space to keep the youth engaged and inspired, parent support nights, offering access to job readiness programs, mental health resources, and family development workshops. We could start small, using community spaces, churches, and et cetera. This would bring our community closer, give students a space, a safe space to grow and empower parents with the resources they deserve. When we invest in our youth, we invest in a stronger, safer, and more united Owens Mills. Thank you.
And that concludes our speaker registration list.
Thank you, everyone who came to speak this evening. The planning board will take your comments into consideration. If there are no, are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay. If there are no further questions or comments, this concludes our citizen input meeting. Thank you for everyone who attended this evening. Do I, board members, as a reminder, our next board meeting will be in person on November the 6th. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.